We are right at seven o'clock, so I'll call tonight's city council meeting to order. And Jolene, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Husnick?
Here.
Councilmember Valento?
Here.
Councilmember Roberts?
Here.
Councilmember Erickson is absent, and Mayor Bain?
Here. I'd like to invite everyone to rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
Counselor, oh my goodness.
Oh, goodness.
What does that mean? Apologize, everybody. Counsel, try that again. Counsel, we have an agenda before you. I will entertain a motion to approve or any changes.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion. We'll take a second from Councilmember Roberts. All of those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, and our agenda is approved. Our next item this evening is open forum. Open forum is any interested parties' opportunity to address counsel on any topic of your choosing. We do not have a public hearing this evening, so if you wish to address counsel, this is your opportunity to do so. If you've signed up, great, we'll call your name. And if you'd like to speak, and haven't signed up, there'll be a time out to do that as well. Signed up this evening, Gary Lee.
Mayor and Counsel, thank you for allowing me to do this. I'm with the Forest Lake Lions, and we want to say a special thank you for the city and the Parks Department for allowing us to be a part of the Arts in the Park this year. It was very successful for us, and that, together with our charitable gambling, allows us to do a lot of different activities. And just highlighting a few of the activities that the Lions do is, first off, we have a $25,000 fund that the teachers can turn receipts in for up to $100 for things that they buy for their classroom, which has been a very popular deal. And this Thursday, we have a free senior dinner. So if you have a Medicare card, you can come and have a free dinner at the American Legion, compliments of the Lions. Last year, we had about 400 people that came. We do scholarships for graduating seniors. We are sponsoring a room at the Invisible Wounds, and have been a big supporter of the Invisible Wounds, which is now has a Forest Lake location. And together with Rick and Al, we do a safety camp with them and feed the kids and have some fun. And also a part of the citywide cleanup. And lately, we have been the winning team for the Lions have collected the most garbage. And we get accused of going to dumpsters and getting it, but we really don't.
(laughing)
In the brochure that I left for you, there's quite a list of things that and the Lions have become a really active part of this community. And very happy to be there. And I was the president last year, so am and has been. But one of the things that we have been doing this year in particular is working with mental health. And we've done a number of things with the middle school and the high school with posters and encouragement. And we're trying to promote so that everyone knows that the mental health hotline is now 988. It's no longer a 1-800 number, it's like a 911, except it's a 988. And it can be used not just for those that are threatening to commit suicide, but for anyone that has the need for talking to somebody. So we'd like to have the city and the individuals promote that 988 number. One of the things that we have found, I guess, let me back up just a second, that the one thing that we are doing and started last year was we've gone to different organizations within the city, and I think I was here last year, in the same deal, and looking for kind of a needs assessment for Forest Lake. And we're going to organizations that are active in the community to see what are the needs that the Lions could help with that aren't being met. And Dave Adams asked for a couple of streets being paved, but that's probably a little extreme.
There's a few more as well.
(laughing) So anyway, the one thing, and we started this conversation last year and have had some follow-up meetings, and that's transportation for people who can't drive within the city of Forest Lake. And we've gotten sort of the attention of the Met Council. And unfortunately, we begged for a pilot program to see if it would work here. And unfortunately, they chose Woodbury and Roseville for their two pilots. So it'll be a year or two before we'll have that second opportunity. But I think that's something that I would encourage the city to look at, because there's a lot of people that don't drive, and they need to get the medical appointments and stuff. And volunteers and neighbors and kids just don't fit the bill. So we need that commercial on-demand rides. So I would ask you, if you think of some needs that Forest Lake has that the Lions could be involved in, that you would submit them either to me or Abby's kind of our conduit for a lot of things around here. So you could let her know, and she could forward them to me if there's anything that the city needs that we can help with. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Gary.
Next, Eugene Hurstel.
Eugene Hurstel, 10234 204th Street North. And I just wanted to talk a little bit about the budget, and I know you're going to be going over that, and then setting the preliminary tax levy. Just a couple of different things. I guess that one of the questions I have is that I know the state of Minnesota was able to give to public safety, I think approximately $900,000 here to Forest Lake. And would consider that, does that go into the general budget? Or how we can help public safety and the fire department, you know, with that? And but then that would help maybe keep some of the stuff down or part of the budget if that's workable. I'd like you to look at that. The other one, too, is the $250,000 that I know some people are saying, oh, well, that'll help our rating. But I also know that there's other things that help our rating. And that it has been in the past, we've had some pretty good ratings. And I think it was about eight years ago, we had one at the top. And there's different things that do set that, whether or not we're getting enough revenue, revenue, excuse me, in to make sure that we are being able to pay our bills and that we're bringing in also commercial and people paying the taxes. And I hope that soon, some of the different, like mallards, I think that will be coming up pretty close. I'm not sure how many years of the tax increment financing, but that would help, too. Those are good things that help, you know, provide for the budget. So I would appreciate that you could even lower it more. I know you've done a little bit. I think it started out at 13.9 whatever, went to 13.2. Maybe it's even lower now, what you've maybe decided or what. But if you could lower, keep it lowered, I know there's a lot of people that need help right now or have, trying to stay in their homes, trying to budget for themselves. And I appreciate that. Thank you. Bye.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in open forum this evening? All right, not seeing anyone come forward. Jolene, anyone online for open forum tonight?
No one indicating they wish to speak.
Okay, we'll close open forum and bring agenda back to council. Counsel, for your consideration, tonight is a consent agenda that consists of items 6A through 6N. And just a quick note that you do have a revised materials for the development agreement that is on our consent agenda for 6M. If you want to make sure we've had an opportunity to take a peek at that. And ready for a motion on the consent agenda, if anyone's ready?
Can I just ask a question? Was there a major change in this revised?
The change was the parkland dedication fees. The developer and the city went back and forth on the calculation for the parkland dedication. The original agreement in your pack, the original packet was $115,000. Now it is $70,000. But it also acknowledges the developer's willingness to construct a trail across the property that connects to Southview Park. We recognize the contribution that plays into the park system. And so that was the difference in the dollar value there. That's the only substantial change in the packet.
And staff's comfortable with the changes and kind of that value for cost that's been given?
That is correct. It was no longer the per-unit cost, but the fair market value assessment, and then also that connector trail cost.
Sure. Thank you.
Well, with learning that, then I would make a motion that we accept the consent agenda, 6A through 6N.
Motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, and our consent agenda is approved. Going to move on to our regular agenda. As we move on to our regular agenda, as we just approved the agenda, I'm going to ask this question anyway, and Amanda, if I'm out of bounds, let me know. I noticed as I was reviewing the packet, the Highway 8 discussion talks about city approving the preliminary concept. Just wanted to make sure that we weren't expecting any action this evening on that, and that it was a discussion-only item, and that action would be at a future agenda or a future meeting?
I did not plan coming to a future agenda item. This is a preliminary design, so it's not the final design.
Okay. So opportunity for input, but you don't need official action?
They'll still even have more public meetings with the project.
Very good. Very good. Thank you. Okay, with that, let's move to our regular agenda, item 7A, which is the 2025 preliminary tax levy and setting our date for the public hearing. Kevin?
Mayor and City Council, thank you for this evening. Just to recap a little bit where we started and where we're at tonight. We started with our budget workshop on August 19th. And then from there, we also discussed the budget as recently as September 9th as well. At that meeting, staff was given direction to take $250,000 out of the park dedication fund tax levy. So what we're looking for tonight is the final preliminary tax levy approval, as that is required to be submitted to the county by September 30th. As a reminder, the levy approved tonight can be decreased. It just cannot be increased from the amount that it is set tonight. So I just have a brief presentation tonight to go over this, the highlights of the changes of from the 2024 levy to the preliminary 2025 levy as it stands right now. So up on your screens right now, one minute. It seems like the computer has froze up right now. So I may refer to your packets in your packets. There's a summary from where the 2024 levy is compared to the 2025 levy. And right now, we're sitting at about $16.6 million in total tax levy across all funds of the city. That is about an 11.5% increase from the 2024 tax levy. So from there, we had some changes. If we go from there, we're starting with the general fund. The general fund has an increase, a lot of things playing into that increase. There are new positions included in that fund. One position for a planning and EDA supervisor, two part-time CSO officers, and one fire training captain are included in that tax levy funding right now. And then also, there is a $250,000 contingency line item fund line M, as we call it, to maintain the city's fund balance policy of 50%. Thank you, Jolene. So now you can follow along from up on your screens as well. So this slide I was just summarizing here, these are the main changes for the increases that you see in that general fund levy. The city also has a number of other levies as well. The first one is a capital improvement fund. It increases about $145,000. This is for funding the median and roundabout landscape improvements. This is spread over five years, as it currently stands, to fund the improvements that are, that were requested by council for the improvements regarding the roundabouts. Capital Equipment Fund is increasing $85,000 from 2024. This is based on the city equipment needs, vehicles, machinery, things of that nature. And it's also planning for the future where the city did issue equipment certificates this year to help with some purchases, some larger purchases of fire trucks and snow piles, trucks. Our plan currently includes, if we keep going at the planned funding rate, that we would have pay-as-you-go, meaning that the city is not planning on issuing any more debt related to equipment at this time. The Economic Development Fund is increasing about $46,500. This is due to funding, to partially funding that planning EDA supervisor at time that would be spent on economic development. And then the Building Maintenance Fund was a new levy in 2024. We are increasing that $50,000 to $100,000 this year. This is to have funds put away for those future maintenance projects that are on the horizon for city-owned buildings. The service funds are increasing about $193,000. This is a regularly scheduled payments that the city for, that has been issued. The main reason for this increase is that the 2024 equipment certificates are issued this year and the levy that is needed to repay that debt. Park Dedication Fund, it's right now proposed to increase a total of $250,000 from 2024. $150,000 of that is related to scheduled park improvements, and $100,000 of that is, was dedicated previously by council for assistance with the Veterans Memorial Project. One of the last slides, one of the last things I wanted to bring to council's attention was at the September 9th meeting, we originally had a $600,000 levy in the Park Dedication Fund that has been taken down to $350,000. So you can see adjusting what those levies look like by taking out the $250,000 in 2025. Projections right now in 2026 and 2027 is that there are not sufficient funds there to do all the scheduled park improvement projects that the staff has identified. So that's just to bring the council's attention. An option would be that we would plug that $250,000 back into the levy and as a one-time levy increase in 2026 to help fund those projects. Or the council had to make decisions on maybe what projects get pushed back or not done based on the funding that is dedicated to this fund. So this to kind of wrap this up in the perspective for council right now. If everything stands as put and based on where our projections are, with new positions and everything, the 2026 levy, based on our financial management plan, would increase, would be at a 13.8% increase. If we add this $250,000 into 2026, and to get those park improvements done, that levy percentage would increase to 15.4%. So we're not looking for an answer for city council right now on what happens in 2026 as far as those projects. It's more or less just to make aware of what that decision, taking that $250,000 off of parks, what that looks like concerning the 10-year capital plan, and how that plays into the financial management plan as well. So what staff is looking for tonight is direction from city council to approve the resolution in the packet as presented to submit that preliminary tax levy, and then also approve the truth and taxation meeting date, which is also included in that resolution. Also noted at the September 9th meeting, there was a request made for, based on the streets, what the, what street projects were done and what that funding is providing. Our city engineer, Ryan Goodman, provided that information, and it is included in your packet. And if you have any questions on that, we'd be happy to answer those.
Kevin, for context, so tonight, the, of course, I just lost it. The levy, so the levy increase for this evening is the 11 point?
11.54%.
11.54%. Thank you.
And that's with taking out the $250,000, the park dedication fund that was at $600,000, and then we took $250,000 out.
And before we did, yes, thank you. And before we did that, when we had our last discussion, we were, were we, is it exactly 13.9%? Is that where we were?
We were at 13.2%.
13.2%, thank you.
Two-one, if I remember correctly.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, open it up for discussion, questions? Maybe while we're thinking about it here, a couple of additional points. Just to kind of reiterate what Kevin mentioned tonight. We set the preliminary levy. This is the amount that we'll show on tax notices that will go out in the fourth quarter. So this is a, not a final number, this is a preliminary number. We cannot go higher than a number that we would select tonight, but we can certainly go lower. Also, if you are interested in just getting plugged into the budget conversation and interested in learning more about what is included in these numbers, I would reference a couple of things. There's a lot of information online that has been kind of walking through our budget discussions to date. And we also will be hosting a budget open house in November, which will be an opportunity to come in and learn more specifically what is planned for projects and to provide some opportunity for feedback. That will be both in-person, and there will also be an online format to that meeting. So just some additional opportunities for input between now and December when we finalize our budget. Any questions that counsel may have or follow-ups related to the preliminary levy?
I just, a couple of thoughts as I was thinking about our number tonight and thinking about the, you know, the future impact specifically on the park plan in 2026 of us making this reduction. First, we have to acknowledge that we have had a number of years of where we are definitely playing catch-up, right? We had a couple of years where we are making additional annual adds into our street fund. We have made some additional adds to parks. And the original plan was to make some substantial additional increases to parks this year. And in our last meeting, we came back from that a little bit, just recognizing that maybe 13% was higher than what we, what we had an appetite for. When I think about where we were this time last year, we were looking at a 10-year plan and adopted a preliminary levy, and then ultimately a final levy that had a pretty substantial increase in both 2024 and 2025, that would then allow for some, you know, some ease to happen in 2026. And a couple of things here. One, we might just be at a moment where we need, we need that relief this year, and I can appreciate that, and I could support that. But that does mean that some things come off the table in 2026. And so, again, this is all about time and pace. And what are we doing when? And this council has been, had a lot of, I think, gumption to take on head-on and cover a lot of those deficits and a lot of that backlog maintenance that hasn't been done. We have funded a lot of that over, you know, several years now. And so to come off of that is certainly an option, but it also means that we're not playing that catch-up. And so, you know, I would encourage us to consider going back to 13.2 and get those park projects done in 2026 as we want, and build that base into funding. But I can also appreciate if we need to, again, come back a little bit this year. It means next year is not as much relief as we had planned, and it also means that some of those projects in 2026 don't get done. So there's my, there's my pitch.
I've been hearing plenty about not being 13.2%. And there are folks that are hurting, certainly, there's no question about that. One of the things that we, I want to remind everybody, too, is that there is some relief through the state of Minnesota. If, you know, depending on your income and your taxes and that kind of thing, you can file for a refund through the state of Minnesota if, you know, if there's a financial issue, even at 11.54%. So I just want to make sure that people are aware of that. That usually occurs in August or so. So anyways, I was hoping we could even trim it a little bit more myself, but.
So just a couple of thoughts. I think that I can understand and appreciate the thought of bringing that 250 back in. But we've really, I mean, even at 350, we're funding the parks much higher than we ever have.
We are.
And so I think we need to be proud of that and acknowledge that and realize that's why we're at where we're at. And so I am comfortable with taking that 250 out. On top of that, just a couple of just general questions, either, it could be either for Dave or for Kevin. On that new line item that we did last year, $50,000 for building maintenance, what was used this year of that, or is it not? Or is that just an idea to continue to kind of build a balance for something big to happen?
Right now, that does need to get looked at closer for how we're going to use those funds. We had a plan put together last year for all the maintenance items that are coming for the city-owned buildings. And there's some quite large ones on there, repaving parking lots, the roof, HVAC, cooling, where these things are three digits, cost figures attached to these things. And if you're not planning and having funds set aside for a new roof or things that happen, where's that funding coming from? So the state's mentality with that fund was, so let's get some fund balance, let's get some funds set aside, let's get those funds built up. So when these things come due, many of them are passed to, where have funds available to do those. City staff plans to look at that a lot closer at the end of this year and into the beginning of next year, to where those funds need to use, to be used. Also looking at, some of those are just normal maintenance items, and how that gets played into this building maintenance fund, or this needs to get absorbed into our general operating levy.
So then, none of that 50 that was levy last year has been used?
To date, no.
To date, okay. That, I can appreciate, also plan to put money away for that, but maybe that could be some conversation here as we, as we go forward, and maybe more of a plan before putting a number to it, or revisit that like we did last year. The other question I have is on the roundabout and median improvements. It mentioned in your slide, $145,000. Initially, we were told $750,000 over a two-year period. We had the consultant come in, and I think we agreed to kind of tone that down, like an in-between. So any idea of where that might be? And hopefully, there's some, since we agreed as a council, I don't think you were here, to do a modified and not so much of a robust rehab? Any thoughts on some dollars there that could be shaved off or saved?
And maybe if I can piggyback a clarifying question. What's in today is the original number, is that right? It hasn't been modified for what Councilmember Roberts is speaking of?
Correct. There's $145,000 spread over five years. And if we look, go back to the financial management plan, that levy then stays at 1.1 million, because as, looking five years down the road, if we want to keep doing the same miles of streets, costs are going to be going up related to streets, as they always do. So then that levy just stays flat. So right now, that's where, that's what it's in at. Unless we get direction from council or some solid dollar amounts for where we want to end that, that number can change as well. Where if it gets trimmed down from $700,000 to $300,000, well, are we doing $150,000 over two years, so then that number doesn't change? You know, we need, we would need that direction of how much, how much dollars are we contributing to these, to these median landscape projects and roundabouts? And then how we either just put one levy in to cover the whole cost at once, or try to smooth this out over a few years?
So I guess that's a follow-up question. And I recall it being a two-year thing with 300 and some thousands. So when was the decision made to go five years? Was that what the consultant had, had maybe recommended? I don't recall that conversation.
That was to get budget priorities in line from city council and stay under the general direction of that 14% needing to get, as we were given with the financial management plan, as was a priority identified by city council back in, I believe that meeting was in April or May, for what you would like to see in your budget. We worked with our financial consultant, how to put this into the plan to kind of smooth this out, so we don't have a big significant increase or decrease. And also knowing that we are going to have conversation around the scope of this project, that the $700,000 was a worst-case scenario in this regards.
So it's a five-year plan now instead of a two-year plan?
Is it five-year funding, two-years project or?
Two-year project, five-years funding where we can fund, we can fund the project, but we are going to have to replace those dollars as, as we get those levy dollars.
Then another, the last question I have right now would be, gentlemen, the public talked about those public safety dollars and where maybe those could be used to offset some of this levy. I don't know any feedback from either chief on that or what, what the plan, long-term plan is there.
So we did, so we did receive about nine hundred eighteen thousand in public safety aid. City council did approve earlier this year to spend about four hundred sixty thousand of that, four hundred fifty thousand of that or so. So that leaves roughly about four hundred fifty thousand dollars left. That can be used for public safety aid purchases, equipment, personnel costs, operating costs, things of that nature. We did put together a, a needs list and a want list that extends beyond this year where it was just a focus of what can we, you know, let's start using these funds, what are some things that the department needs? We did use some of those funds to offset some camera purchases for the police department that were originally in the capital equipment fund and things of that nature. It is important to note though, for example, if we would use these funds per se to fund the fire training captain for one year, that funding will eventually go away and there's going to have to be a tax levy there to support that. So it would cause a larger jump in future years to offset that. So that would be a direction from council to, that you would want to use some of those funds to help ease into that, but it's really just pushing that impact out further and further down the road because these funds would run out. The plan would be to, with those public safety dollars, is to come back after we get the final cost and from this year, how much we have left. The chiefs revisit what was in the original plan for what were purchases were for 2025 and bring that back to council. Unless we get specific direction from council that you would like to use those funds for a different purpose.
We still have not heard from the safer, I'm, I'm assuming if we had heard the safer grant, we all would have gotten notification. So that is still outstanding? Is that the case, chief?
Mayor and council, we're down to the last week, and at this point, no Minnesota Fire Department has been awarded the safer grant, and it sounds like we are probably not going to get it. There's one last round that will come out on Friday, and I think we would have heard if we would have received it.
I, you know, if, if we do not get that grant, and I will continue to keep all fingers and toes crossed that we do, if we do not get that grant, I am open to a conversation here in the fourth quarter about using some of those public safety dollars for either partial funding of that position or partial, partial funding of the C S O position. I, I'm open to that. I, I would prefer that we reserve that to be a fourth quarter conversation once we know for sure if we have those grant dollars. But I just, I'm, I'm open to that conversation. I also think when we make that decision, we need to also look at what was on. It's been a while since council has seen that equipment list of where those dollars were designated to go. And, you know, it's kind of a good priority assess, priority exercise of council of deciding, would we prefer to have staffing use, use of those dollars rather than equipment? And I'm, I, I think that's wise and I'm open to that. In preparation for that, I think maybe chiefs, it would be helpful to just have your updated assessments of which, which equipment could be considered, you know, not on that list or funded under different means if we were to want to do that.
Yep. And we've actually met on a couple of occasions the last month or two, looking at those needs or original ask what was approved and then going forward.
The other, then the other part of that is understanding what the spike looks like in future years. And so I think also because every push that we make this year has ripple effect on future years, so to have, when we make that decision, to know what year is going to then spike and just do a gut check on is, you know, are we, are we comfortable with that? Because it's not, it's, it's not, not an option to fund if we want that position to continue, so.
So with, with all that said, my questions, I, I think, you know, I'm comfortable tonight with where we're at. I think we need to do a lot more work. We've, all we've done so far is dropped two hundred fifty thousand from one department. I think department-wide, organizational-wide, all departments need to look at a little bit to see where we can shave so that we can drop it down closer to ten percent. You hear things on the news and different counties and cities are having a, there's news stories about a five percent increase, a six percent increase, a seven percent increase, and here we're up at eleven. I think we can, we can shave some things off and still move the city forward and get some of these projects that we want to get done, including spending way more in parks than we ever have.
I will counter that with the reminder that we, there were many communities that were high double-digit or mid-double digits a year before we took a jump. So we are a year behind where many communities were in those increases, but I still appreciate your point.
And, and not having a full council to have a robust conversation about maybe where we do, is another reason why I'm comfortable with leaving the number to give us a little bit of time and some just runway to really dive a little deeper on some of these numbers.
I'll jump in.
Yeah.
My philosophy for preliminary budget and passing it is usually to go higher, knowing that we can always go lower. And I'm comfortable with the eleven point five four percent that we're at tonight. I wasn't here for the prior meeting where we dropped the two hundred and fifty thousand from the park dedication fund, and I kind of, I figured that was going to happen. So I was mentally prepared because I feel like on council, I've been one to always push for parks. And ideally, that six hundred thousand would be okay to keep going with and, because we need it, I think the community wants it. But knowing where we are and knowing from all the feedback that we've gotten from the community and knowing that last year we went up high and as to Blake's point as well, the parks dedication fund has never seen a jump like this ever before, and same with last year as well. So I think we're moving in the right direction and we'll get there eventually, just as long as we keep our eye on the prize of doing like what we did with the streets last year. That we'll get there eventually and as long, I'm comfortable with as long as there is an increase for parks, I think we'll get there. And so the eleven point five four percent that we're seeing tonight, I think is a good number. And I'm sure with, from now until our next, from now until when we have to pass the budget in December, I, I'm sure there will be some wiggle room. So there tends to be, to come down.
Any other questions or points of discussion? All right. Anyone ready for a resolution or a motion with the resolution?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number zero nine two three two four zero three, a resolution approving the 2025 preliminary property tax levy and setting the public hearing date for the 2025 budget and property tax levy.
I'll second it.
There is a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, and motion carries. Our next item this evening is item seven B, consideration of resolution nine twenty-three twenty-four zero two, accepting donation. And let me just get there real quick. I would move that council approve resolution nine twenty-three twenty-four zero one, resolution of gratitude for the Forest Lake Beautification Group for volunteering at the 2024 Community Corn Feed. Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, and motion carries. Did I skip a resolution?
Yeah. Could you go back to seven B, which would be resolution zero nine twenty-three twenty-four oh two, accepting a donation from FLA?
I would move that council accept, I would move that council pass with gratitude resolution nine twenty-three twenty-four zero two, accepting a resolution from FLA for the Forest Lake Fire Department in the amount of one thousand dollars. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and we'll take a second from council member Husnek on this one. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, and motion carries. All right. Thank you, Jolene. Next item, item seven D, consideration of the Met Council Imagine 2025 Draft Policy Plan and Comment Letter.
Mayor, being members of the council, including your packet tonight is a draft comment letter to the Metropolitan Council. As noted in my staff report, every ten years, the Metropolitan Council starts their planning process for the regional plan for the area for the next ten years. They've released their draft plan and have requested for comments, which is included in, there was a hyperlink in my staff report if you really wanted to go out and have some light reading. Just as a reminder, this is a kickoff to the regional planning process. So once they go through their planning process in a couple of years, it'll kick off our planning process. So the framework that they outline in their draft plan really sets the foundation for things that need to be in our comp plan in the next update process. So to summarize, I did include in the staff report the areas that we're expressing support, micro-transit opportunities. That's the idea of having a smaller transportation network in, in more sub-regional areas. Some flexibility for gaining density compliance. So as a reminder that all of the cities in the metropolitan region have a community classification, and in that community classification have a certain minimum density that they have to meet. The Met Council's willing to be more flexible with cities in how they meet those density requirements. They haven't quite identified how specifically, but it sounds like they're willing to work on a one-on-one basis with communities, especially with communities that might have areas where redevelopment could occur. Really, they're looking at densities on new land developed, not necessarily those redevelopment areas, which could be a benefit to Forest Lake. And then in general, their integrative water suppo, water policy. The idea being there, as a region, we should be looking at water a little bit more holistically, so not just the wastewater that they have regulation over that we're most familiar with, but also surface water and drinking water. Now that said, I can't say that this letter gave glowing reviews of the plan. There were areas that I'm expressing that we should note for the record, we don't support. The Met Council is proposing to change Forest Lake's community classification. That would increase our minimum density requirement of from three units per acre to a minimum of four units per acre. It's a small change. We kind of knew it was coming. I thought that it might be coming in the next go-round, maybe not this one. But right now, it's really hard for the city to meet its three units per acre as it is. Leading right into that, we do challenge the Met Council, or my letter does challenge the Met Council's way that they exempt certain land areas. So right now, if there is a, a wetland, those areas can be exempted, exempted, but buffers for wetlands may not be able to be. Forest Lake is really interesting in that we have some pretty dense clay soils, and our stormwater ponds aren't allowed to be exempted, nor are our regional roads, those are, are local roads. So those are two areas where I've said maybe we need to look at those exemptions and expand them, maybe sub-regionally based on environmental factors. The Met Council is also going to, considering putting in a requirement that cities must assess the feasible practicality of development. So they identified in the current comp plan processes that cities would utilize land use designations such as a mixed-use land use designation, as counting towards some of that residential density. The Met Council is asking cities to really look into that practical feasibility analysis. Essentially, they're asking us to maybe forecast commercial markets, not an area that local governments should be involved in. They also are asking cities to conduct greenhouse gas inventory, emission inventories, and then also look how to reduce those in their communities. Again, these are areas that local governments don't have the skills, the resources, the technical expertise. Both of those last two with the requirements, we are noting in here, if those are things the Met Council is going to regulate amongst cities, that they provide the resources to cities to conduct those analyses. And then lastly, surface water and water supply requirements. So again, we, we're in support overall of this integrated water policy, but we already have robust, complex systems for regulating water in the state. And so adding another regional water system to potentially add more regulations, staff notes, and I would encourage the council to make comment on, that that might not be in the best interest at this time. So you have a few different options. You can approve them, you can direct staff to alter them, or you can determine that the city doesn't want to provide comment at this time. But staff has drafted these on the basis that we do believe we should be submitting comment to the Met Council, specifically our sector representative, our district representative. And so I've prepared these for your consideration. My recommendation is that you would move to authorize the mayor to sign them and then direct staff to submit them on your behalf. Any questions?
Council, what questions, comments might we have? I have, I have a little bit of heartburn over the, our split decision on, I am, the scroll bar is not my friend tonight, I apologize. I just lost it. We are split on integrated water policy. We say we are supportive of a regional approach, but then we are, there are some components where we are opposed.
Yes, that is correct. We do, I will just note.
Is, is it, is it something we're able to split where we can?
So each of the policies, so there's transportation, land use, parks and rec, each of those has numerous policies integrated in them and then objectives and actions in them. So for the integrated water policy approach, there is probably fifteen to twenty different ways the Met Council aims to achieve these things in the future. So what I've said is, and noted in here is, and we certainly can remove it, but the idea that there would be partnerships and that the Met Council would advocate for legislature initiatives that would advance integrated water policy, these are really good things. We probably should be looking at the region's water system as a whole. However, when we're taking then the possibility of adding another level of regulation in there, that is concerning.
I guess I'm, I get concerned that one, one means the other, that if we are, you know, we are a small, small drop in this water pool. And so if we are supportive of the integrated approach, I get concerned that that also means we do it their way or we have less, a little bit less control in the execution of that. But I, the words on the page, I, I'm, I'm in supportive of the words of, on the page, and maybe that is just where we should land is that is okay to provide that feedback. As always, the devil's in the details, and so I worry that the execution of if we are supportive of that, that also means that potentially there are areas where we have less control and some areas where I, I just, I feel that maybe our water concerns are different than other communities and Ryan, maybe if that, if you would disagree with that, maybe I'd, I'd, this would be a great time to hear that. But I just feel like it is, yes, it's a concern that should be managed at the regional level. It's, I worry about how that gets executed at the Met Council.
Mayor of City Council, during the White Bear Lake lawsuit, a lot of the communities in northern Washington County and Anoka County were very against getting involved and having that shared cooperation with the Met Council that we have currently with the D N R, because the D N R is the ones that's approving your water usage, where your wells go and all the other requirements with that, and then bring in a separate agency that's, might have a different objective in mind and not aligned with the municipality water supply systems and how they're owned and operated and in compliance with the D N R and all the requirements that come along with that, the water supply plans, you know, and all the other plans and, and et cetera. So it is probably just more red tape we would have to deal with, and I don't see a benefits in it, you know, as long as we're working collaboratively with adjacent communities on emergency plans, and we do have that set up in our comp plans. As development extends, we will have some interconnections here and there and stuff like that, and we, we do have different water sources than the communities south of us.
So would it be inappropriate for us to re, just stay silent on that point of where we are in support and don't necessarily?
So, would it be inappropriate for us to just stay silent on that point of where we are in support and don't necessarily refute it? But then, the more specific details where you, I think you've done a nice job articulating some concerns on the portions that we are against. Might be closer to where I would land, but, counsel, I'm wide open to feedback on this. I think, and is, go ahead. So, Ryan, is what I just said in line with what, what, are we, are you and I aligned with that perhaps a support at the regional level would maybe overstated position?
I think you're in line with them on a regional level on transportation and some of those other shared services like that, but not a local water system.
Specific to water, yeah, that's, that's my concern.
And then even with the local stormwater requirements and rules that we're already having to fulfill through Bowser and the Watershed Districts, now you want to put another layer on top of that?
Abby, when is, when is feedback due?
Not until October seventh. I think the water policy plan section of the letter can easily be modified by removing the section where we are in support of regional partnerships and collaboration. So, part of the comments there are, are working together. I think that we could take those out and have that stronger approach, that the idea of additional regulation is not, not supportive.
Not supported.
I think the, within the water policy plan, which is page two sixty-one of our packet, the, I think the first sentence is fine, where it just says the city is strongly in support of the goal, that water planning, management, operations are collaborative. And maybe just like leave it at that, because I think broadly speaking, I think I would assume that the city would be in support of that. But then, when it comes to the actual policy, we could say something along the lines of, like deleting the rest of that paragraph, and then the in-support of bullet points for partner one and provide the three.
That's certainly fine. I mean, it is the council's letter. I, you know, I defer to the council's position on this matter. I didn't want to necessarily imply that we weren't in support of collaborative efforts, you know, of helping identify roles and responsibilities in this region.
I think what Hannah said makes a lot of sense, and also Ryan too, that makes sense to not add another layer of bureaucracy.
I also think that's like second to last paragraph there kind of captures it all.
Yeah, too, I would agree.
So, what I'm hearing from the council is that there's favorability, at least in the water policy plan, to keep the first sentence of that section, remove everything down to the, what would be the third section of underlined, and just say the city is not in, you know, that said, the city is not in support of the integrated policy actions. Is that what I'm hearing, I'm seeing some heads, none?
Yes. Did that capture it? Hannah? What you intended, okay. Any other points of discussion or questions related to the letter? I appreciate your comments, and I think you did a nice job on the areas of unsupportive, so.
Yeah, I would just add, I appreciate staff taking the time to get this put together and sent out. This is another layer of government by appointed officials that we have to deal with, and it makes it more and more difficult for development and everything else. And so, this is, I appreciate this.
With that, I would move that council approve the policy plan comment letter as amended in our meeting this evening.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. Okay, that ends the action portion of our agenda. We are going to move into a couple of discussion topics. Anything that we discussed tonight that requires official action will come back before council in a future meeting. And so, this will be, naturally be a little bit more of an informal session. First item this evening is consideration and discussion related to the Highway Eight preliminary concept plan, and Ryan.
Hi, Mayor City Council, tonight, basically, we want to provide an update on where the Highway Eight project is. And then, right now, the, it's currently in preliminary design stage, and we'll go through schedule, kind of scope of work, what's included, and then some things for us to consider as a city too, as the project moves forward. So, in your, I know in your packets online, if you have that also open too, you can see the big prints of these. I tried clipping it out, so we can see this as a PowerPoint as we go through. Basically, the project's going to start at Highway sixty, or I thirty-five, and it'll continue on Highway Eight eastward all the way up to Carmel Avenue up in Shisago City. Tonight, in your packet, I only show you guys what's in the Forest Lake area. If you do have a desire to see other areas of the, extents of the project, I can certainly share those PDFs too. So, as we start from I thirty-five and go eastbound, we're not changing any of the footprints of the roadway. They still spent a lot of this summer doing field gathering, soil boring, surveying, and stuff like that. Once we get to the intersection of Highway sixty-one and Highway Eight, that's where you'll start seeing some changes in the project, and the change I'm talking about there is the construction of the trail that'll be along the north side of, does the cursor show up when I do that or not? No. Probably too hard, but on the north side, right where the Hardwood Creek Trail is existing, you can see there's a little gray area that would mimic where the trail is going to be extended and constructed to connect at the Hardwood Creek Trail on the north side of Highway Eights, and it's going to continue all the way up to Shisago City. So, that would be the extension, and this portion of the immigrant, Swedish immigrant trail that's going to be constructed. So, when this project's all said and done, you could basically go up to the Hardwood Creek Trail, jump on the Swedish immigrant trail, and head east all the way up to Shisago City when this project's going to be done. So, it'll definitely be a nice amenity to the area, and certainly for a regional aspect. There's no access, access changes for Forest Lake on Highway Eight portion, even though I'll talk about that later in the presentation, there are going to be a lot of access changes through Wyoming and Shisago, but not in the Forest Lake area, so everything stays the same. There is going to be a lot of reconfiguration on the local roadway system at the intersection of Greenway and Highway Eights, but majority of that will be in Wyoming. But you can see what they're proposing at the intersection right here, or looking at the Holiday Gas Station area, and then just east of it, there will be a constructed roundabout on the southeast side of Highway Eight there, which will definitely help traffic flows and queuing. And with the project, the county is looking to take it all the way down to North Shore Trail. But I want to definitely point out what you'd, you can see the reddish tan areas, those are pedestrian walkways along the roundabouts and through the roundabout, and up to Highway, and through Highway Eight there, but they don't extend down to North Shore Trail. So, that'll be something I'll talk about later in the presentation, that that's something that the city wants to incorporate it in the project as it moves along in final design. Quick answer I got from Shisago County is there's nowhere for it to connect to at this point in time, but we still haven't had that full conversation of what North Shore Trail could put, is going to potentially look like and is being planned for, and stage a timing of that construction too. So, that'll be more information we bring forward too. So, this area circled in red is the area that's specifically in Forest Lake Road, the local roadway system of the project that they currently propose to reconstruct it down to that portion of North Shore Trail. The blue on both sides of the yellow just mimics shoulders, so kind of replacing kind what's there today. Just some project background on the project. Shisago County is leading this project. MinDOT's starting to remove themselves as the project lead on a lot of their roadways, just other agencies have more resources and can move a project a little faster. MinDOT still is engaged in some, like our Highway ninety-seven project, obviously, they're leading that. But in this case, Shisago County will be leading the project, and like I talked about earlier, they go from I thirty-five up through Carmel Avenue in Shisago City, and then it'll have a roundabout constructed at that intersection. Schedule for the construction is planned from two thousand twenty-five to two thousand twenty-eight. Twenty-five, what might be occurring is some private utility relocation. I think they are going to do an early contract for clear, clearing and grubbing and get some trees removed, just to avoid some of the bat rules and timing of when that happens. They got certain windows nowadays that's with federal money, they can come in and do that clearing and grubbing. So, that would be some of that work that would happen in twenty-five. Twenty-six, they're looking to focus on the local roadway systems through the project, and then twenty-seven and twenty-eight is when they're looking to focus on Highway Eights. Now, they haven't developed a full staging plan for the project, so a lot of that could still potentially change. As if you look in my next bullet point paragraph, it's, that's right there has changed the project probably a two-year time period already, and as they're working through that. As they discovered northern long-eared bats in the project area, and because it's a federally listed threatened and endangered species, they're having to work through a mitigation plan on that. Other project partners in this, MinDOT obviously in Washington County, and then local agencies, communities, and TEP panel groups as well. So, project scope, it'll reconstruct the roadway, realignments and intersection control changes, reduction in access points, trail construction along the north side of Highway Eights and the connection to the Hardwood Creek Trail, and the city is looking to extend sanitary sewer and water main crossing extensions, which I'll get into a little further here in the project. So, this would be the particular area we're looking at the project to get existing water and sewer across the roadway. This is a map showing our existing sanitary sewer and water main in that location already. So, we have water main that already runs on the south side of Highway Eights, then it circles back and loops back down two thirty-six. Sanitary sewer is a dead-end manhole on two thirty-six. Just north of here and across the highway is the Goodview Circle industrial park area. Does everyone know where it kind of adds, or good? So, this is what's been discussed with Public Works, and potentially, we would be proposed with the project, so we would extend a, you know, when they're in their full reconstruction of the roadway, we, at this time, we would extend the twelve-inch water main across the road. That industrial park area would be served by a future lift station. This scope of this project, we would not plan on installing a lift station unless there was a project that was ready to go, and there was probably some financial contribution at that time from that project to install a lift station, but everything would be set up that it could just take off anytime if there was something big that were to happen, but we would get water main across the road and definitely end it with a hydrant. So, now we would have some fire coverage on that side of Highway Eights, but then also would just have a stub right there that could just continue down that roadway. That roadway is gravel, maybe we put some double millings on it, so it might seem more durable than a gravel road, but we haven't done any pavement improvement to Goodview Circle. So, looking back in our, what's on our comp plan, so when we did our comp plan stuff, this stuff was already done and completed with the water study prior to the Highway Eight project moving along, so you'll see a lot of it, I'll see in the next one, but this is how we show that this area would have been sewered with a sanitary sewer, and so that's in our comp plan. Water main talks about this being post-two thousand twenty, twenty forty, just because the Highway Eight project wasn't known at the time of this water supply plan was completed. But obviously, when we took a twelve-inch water main all the way up there and looped it around, you know, you had future plans with it, so. Project costs, Shisago County, MinDOT do not expect any cost participation from the city of Forest Lake for the planned highway work or the street improvements to Greenway, as I have shown you tonight on the, the figures. If the city does request pedestrian facilities along Greenway from the roundabout to North Shore, I'm, I would anticipate local participation should be anticipated with that. And then, at the city, sanitary sewer and water main extensions, those would be a hundred percent city costs. MinDOT does not cover any of those costs, sewer and water, anytime we get into any of their road right-of-ways and their projects. We are there by permits, and even if, like the Highway Eight project, you know, they're widening the road, so we need to relocate our water main, that's a city cost and city responsibility, so, you know, that's something that we'll cover here in the next slide. So, that estimated cost to get sanitary sewer and water across in today's dollars with a twenty-five percent, twenty-five percent contingency on that is just under five hundred and forty thousand dollars. You could get some of that in payback over connection fees and area charges, but it probably would not pay back that whole amount, other than just to have those services on that other side of the road, which could attract different businesses and different uses over time, and provide better fire coverage. So, this is our best guess estimates with the information available. Sometimes, once you go through final agreements, MinDOT or Shisago County might add some other costs into this one, such as a certain percent of traffic control, or a certain percent of mobilization, and some big items like that. But this should be a very accurate budget-y number with the figure that we showed where we would want to take stuff and what those costs would be. So, tonight, we're just kind of looking for the city to give the nod on their preliminary design, just so the project can proceed. Like I said, there will be future public meetings, and then obviously, next steps in regards to final design approvals and stuff as they work through their environmental stuff too as well. Looks like I started the PowerPoint and didn't finish it, so, or I didn't save it and sent it, so. It was a long couple of weeks, a lot of stuff in the queue, so. Next steps on myself, obviously, I want to provide a written document to Shisago County, MinDOT's, kind of saying if we're supporting the direction of the design, if there's things that we want explored further and stuff like that, that's what we're looking for in feedback tonight. So, with that, I'll open up any questions you might have about the Highway Eight project that's being led by Shisago County.
I know you mentioned no changes to intersections. How about changes to lighting or other kind of safety elements for those intersections, especially at-
So, that would be so much farther down in the design that I haven't seen anything on that, but that's something that we can certainly outline in the letter to get stuff, so, information that we could share, or what is the plan for that. I doubt they've even started any preliminary design on lighting at this point in time.
That would be at our cost, I would assume, if we did, right?
I would not go decorative lighting on this corridor.
No, no, no.
So, if you, if they stay with the MinDOT lighting on it, this would be a MinDOT cost.
Okay.
As it's all, it depends, it's how it's fed, right? In this area, you got some of that lighting up at this, the thirty-five, sixty-one, and there's been a lot of lighting projects in that area over time too, that, that's all MinDOT's. Nothing you're involved in, right, Dave?
If they came back with, if they came back proposed lighting same as today, are we, are we okay with that? I know there's areas where we would say definitely no, and I'm just not familiar with, enough with this intersection to know if that is wise or not.
Well, they're definitely going to have all-new lights at the intersection of Greenway and Highway Eight, because they'll be bringing in new signals, and then the new luminaires on top of that. You're still going to have your traditional MinDOT pole along the corridor, which is that gray-looking pole, probably a higher pole than normal, just to get that better coverage in that area with less lights. And then, I assume as you meander out of that Greenway intersection of Highways and start going northeast, you're going to have less lights, and it'll be as dark as it is today. I could be wrong too, they could have a full lighting plan, and I just haven't been, seen anything on it.
So, Ryan, a couple of questions, two different subjects. One on the, on the pedestrian facilities from- One, on the, on the pedestrian facilities from where that roundabout is proposed down to Northshore. Obviously, that'd be our cost, is, are our plan to, we are going to redo Northshore from Greenway back to 61, are we proposing sidewalk or trail or pedestrian right up to that intersection?
We would have trail coming up to that intersection.
Seems to kind of make sense.
Or a wider sidewalk.
Because then it does hook you up with that Swedish trail or whatever, you know?
I think we should consider pedestrian to, for the connectivity to the, to the trail, or else it's just going to be a segment on, I would expect with these, I mean, Greenway already is pretty heavily traveled, but with these improvements, it'll be even more heavily traveled, and so, to me, it's just, this is that connecting piece that we should fund.
So then the other question related to the sewer across 8, do we have, or have we received a lot of requests from those commercial property owners there about connecting to city water and sewer? Would they then get a, be, assume that they'd be assessed a SAC and WAC fee and all these connections fees you're talking, and would they be forced to do that, or is it their decision?
Well, the, that would be a city initiative if we want to continue to bring it to that particular area. My understanding is there's been several requests for water. I don't know exactly about sewer, maybe Community Development or Fire has more information on that. It's in the city's comprehensive plans. I know some businesses that are, past applications we've had come through here have gone down the process, and then when they were required to have a sprinkled building and on, going to be on well, and what type of use they were going to have, they just, they aren't going to have that capacity, so then they looked elsewhere. So, potentially, it does bring new business, but how it would work, you could assess it, or if you extend it, you know, linear, you know, front, linear foot, but when they do connect to it, they would be required by city code and ordinance to pay that SAC and WAC, and then they'd also have to pay a SAC charge to the Met Council too.
So I think having conversations with those property owners at some point, sooner than later, to gauge that interest, I think it'd be great, makes sense, if we're doing this now, to do it, and that land, I would assume, long-term, would be more value based on, especially on the, just fire suppression itself, being able to do that in a building and, as they, they can't now, I suppose, with just a well, right?
Can you flip back to the developed, undeveloped? How many parcels are we talking about that's undeveloped? I know there's a separate redevelopment opportunity potentially, but how many, are there a lot of purely undeveloped parcels in that section right now?
No, there's only a couple or so out there, but to answer, at least to provide some more context, we routinely get inquiries for expansion.
Yeah.
And add-ons or even a tear-down. One of the challenges is the land area associated with those septic systems and just that other infrastructure that's needed. They really can't, there's not a lot of area to expand because of setbacks to wells and drain fields and all that kind of stuff. But I do think that this would be an area we would see quite a bit of redevelopment or expansion occur, if there were those urban services there.
And it is, so making that extension is also consistent with the comp plan, correct?
Correct.
Yeah. I, I think it's one of those that if we don't take this opportunity to do it, we will kick ourselves in the future that we hadn't.
And even if we just get the utilities across the road, just having that hydrant on the other side is going to improve probably people's insurance ratings, and it's going to obviously provide a lot more efficiencies for the fire department. And the sewer line that we're bringing across is just a 6-inch force main, right? So it's not a big pipe. If it doesn't get used for 30 years, it's still going to be fine, but, you know, then you would have your gravity and your lift station that you could do a part of road or whatever, or you got some flexibility.
We saw pricing on the, on the sewer line, what is the pricing for the trail if we were to do that connectivity?
So I guesstimated that would be a local participation of about $75,000. I had that in the slot, I thought.
And the timing for that, again, probably $2026, $2027?
I think that would be part of '26, because that's when they want to focus on the local roadway.
Should go back to 13.9.
Sorry, bad joke.
And Ryan, how much did you say again?
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five, yeah. And, and it's not currently in the 10-year plan, so if we were to add that component, we would either have to raise future levy or identify an additional $75,000 a project to come out somewhere else, right?
Correct.
Okay.
So it's in the staff reports, under fiscal, fiscal impacts?
Thank you. I, I do think though, with the planned connectivity, I mean, that means essentially somebody's able to go from Hardwood Creek Trail downtown through our downtown, up Northshore Trail, on Trail to get onto this new, new trail.
And when all those roadways are down, you could actually even have a loop. You could go south on the Hardwood Creek Trail, turn up Northshore Trail, go up Greenway, and then come back down the Swedish immigrant trail, and then you can even go north on the Hardwood Creek Trail till, I don't remember the name, north of that trail is, but.
Yeah.
It provides a lot more opportunities, and if people are claiming to be that bike rider that travels to these businesses, now, that opportunity's definitely going to be there with this Highway 8 project being completed. You got a coffee shop that's right in that vicinity, that's probably going to benefit from it, it's like you see up by Nisswa, you know, right on those main trails. So, you know, there's some exciting things that you can imagine coming forward, you just gotta say yes or no sometimes.
Yeah. And when we talk about community feedback and connectivity and trails, this is exactly the type of project that the community's been wanting, so.
And I'd like to, I think I'm playing devil's advocate on the cost of the pedestrian improvements, that maybe the project itself would cover some of that, and not 100% city cost too, so, since they're already paying for the road, right?
Right.
Yeah. You'd certainly want that as a component of that job. Trails are the biggest issue right now, especially with stuff that's already built, so, it's a great, great idea.
Counsel, any other points of feedback related to the plan? If we, if council were to approve this water extension that comes out of the sewer and water funds, correct? What does that do to fund budget, and, you know, we just, we just did a workshop to talk about both of those funds, what does that, what does that look like?
Mayor and City Council, we need to plug those numbers into the plan, but I'm looking at it, to, if we kind of just split that cost 50/50, I don't know what it is between the funds. Part of the plan is with those funds and the 10-year projections is to have fund balance available to be able to do things that come up that maybe weren't planned for. So I would envision that there would be some funds there available to do this, but how that affects future years, utility rates and all things like that, would just need to be reconsidered.
Is that something you could bring back at some point during here? It'd be, it'd be nice to know as we are considering budget this year, I know it's not this year budget, but it'd be good to know just as we're considering budget this year, what that impact would look like.
Yeah, part of the plan, if you remember last year, when we approved the final tax levy and budget, we also approved that 10-year plan, so all the changes and updates that we have, all those documents will be updated and put in front of council, so I'll add that, make sure that gets in there.
Thank you. Counsel, any other points of feedback on this item? All right, Ryan, anything else you need from us?
Mayor City Council, just to recap, my understanding is when I write my response letter to the county, you want me to request more information on what's being planned for the project lighting along the corridor, and for the project to explore pedestrian improvements along Greenway Avenue. And overall, we support where the Highway 8 project footprint is currently at with the extension of the regional trail, the immigration regional trail, and that's kind of really what I'll include at this point.
That summed it up, I think.
Fair.
Water and sewer.
And then, yeah, water and sewer.
And waters. Perfect, thank you, Ryan. Next item for consideration, local affordable housing funds, and Abby.
Mayor, Bane, members of the council, I think I've brought to you the local affordable housing aid discussion in the past. Again, that this is a new state tax to fund local affordable housing efforts in the community. We've had a few different conversations with both our Planning Commission and our EDA in terms of the different types of uses we can use for our Laha funds. So again, we can use them for emergency rental assistance, new construction or redevelopment, and then we can use them for rehabilitation, either rental or owner occupied, and discussions with the Planning Commission and EDA, they both expressed a favorability towards rehabilitation, recognizing that some of our owner occupied housing in the older parts of Forest Lake might be in need of some of that assistance, especially when you can have a greater area median income than a lot of the other programs that are not being served right now. They also expressed favorability to partnering with other organizations. We've talked with Community, Washington County Community Development Agency, who can help provide services to provide for the affordable, or for new construction redevelopment, as well as rehabilitation. So I've included in your packet specific programs that could help the city meet some of its comprehensive plan goals to improve and maintain existing housing units. Specifically, I am suggesting that the city consider a program with the CDA that would help with the rehabilitation of homes for people that make 115% of the area median income. That's a qualifying item, and that we would put most of our dollars in that bucket. That we would also utilize the county's NOAA Grow Program, which helps with preservation and rehabilitation of rental units. They are a lot lower area median income, but this is also an area of the community in that kind of older part of Forest Lake. Many of our units, if they're already deed restricted, affordable, are aging, and they're going to need some investment at some point. And then also the CDA's Grow Fund, which could help with the creation of new single-family housing. So the Planning Commission was concerned that if we took all of our big pot of money and put it into new, new housing construction, that one project could just eat it all up. But they were maybe a little bit more favorable to partnering with an agency or organization, be that the CDA or someone else, if there was like a habitat house, or there was some other, maybe a single-family construction that we could help with. I'm recommending that we would put 10% of our annual funds, be about $30,000 each year to help contribute to a single-family house or to three single-family houses. Tonight, your, for your consideration is discussion of the recommendations that are before you, especially splitting up the funds into three different housing pots, and then essentially directing staff to continue to work with the CDA on developing an agreement for their administration of our Laha funds, which would be brought back before you at a different time. Do you have any questions?
Any, Counsel, any questions you might have, or feedback?
It's not a whole lot of money, when you boil it all down. So, I think the biggest issue we're going to have there is try to figure out who exactly it would go to, and seems like it would take a lot of work to try to get that figured out.
Thankfully, the county already has programs established. We definitely can beef up our information, our technical assistance on our website pointing to those county programs. Forest Lake is well-served by the CDA, so I don't think that their programs are so unknown. I think more than anything, there's, there's going to be more people that need the assistance and less money, not less money, but than we would have available, so, I don't know that, um...
Does that account for staff time?
Uh, the program can't be utilized for staffing.
Okay.
So, of our money, no, no dollars are able to be used for staffing.
That's my, so that's my, that's my sticking point. So do we have a sense, and maybe, maybe this is cart before horse, but do we have a sense on what the charges, what the Washington County would charge us for administration of those funds, or is this part of, is this feedback part of what goes into them determining their rates?
Um, so the county, my understanding is the county does have support for new staffing to help administer the programs and the, and the use of Laha funds with staff. To date, and I know that Christina had had some conversations with their executive director as well, to date, I have not heard that the county would be charging us, but those would be things that we'd have to discuss in our agreement in the future.
I would not anticipate any charges from the county.
Okay, excellent. It's an answer we, not that, not that the county is reluctant to give that answer, but it's not often we hear those types of answers, so that's wonderful news.
It's because they want our money, right? So like, we're giving them the Laha money.
It's a bigger pool, it's a bigger pool, yeah. I guess, in, in deference to, in deference to that, and if we are able to be à la carte and, you know, have designed the Forest Lake program the way we want, that's, that's great. I would also be interested in feedback from them on what other communities are doing, and if there's another community that has found a great, a great plan. I, I really like the Planning Commission's feedback on spreading it out and helping more homeowners with more, a larger number of smaller dollar projects than doing a couple of small, large projects. I think, I, I really liked that feedback, and I think, I think we're, you know, heading in the right direction with kind of the allocation as it's been set out. As I read through, I didn't have concerns on that, my concern was on, on paying for the management, but if that is covered, that's great. Any other points of feedback?
So the direction for me is to go work with the county and bring something back?
I...
Great, thank you.
That looks great. Thank you. Okay, that is the end of our planned discussion items this evening. Let's move into staff updates and start with Jolene.
People updates this evening.
Abby.
I do have two. I did meet with the Veterans Memorial Committee last week. I think, if you hadn't already seen, they are enhancing a little bit of their promotional materials, because they are really trying to put some greater emphasis on their capital campaign. They are looking at raising $275,000 by the springtime in order to stay on track for a fall 2025 groundbreaking six, 26 construction. That's already been accounted for in all of the plans, and this would be a project that they're funding themselves, but they really need the community's support in that. So you might see some things coming forward, including them meeting with you next month to talk about the project. Then also, we are just about to release our volunteer and sponsorship drive for hometown holidays, so I'll send that out to all of the council, but we do hope to continue to rely, as we have in the past, on the Chamber, who's really helped secure some of those sponsors and volunteers that we've done. But mark your calendar, if you hadn't already, for Friday, December 6th, event at the park, 4:30 to, you know, 6:30, 6:45, we'll have that tree lighting, as we've done in the past.
Very good. Thank you, Abby. Dave?
Hi, just an update on Belts Courts Rehab, they've, they put the new posts in today, they'll continue doing that through the rest of the week. Get a tolerance for curb next week, blacktop the following week, and finishing off the week after that, so the hope should be mid, mid-October to have that, that finalized, depending on, on temperature, they may get the coating on yet this year, if we have a year like last year, but if not, it would be put on in the spring.
Fabulous. Thanks, Dave. Chief Peterson?
No updates.
All right. Chief Newman?
Mayor and Counsel, the only update I have is just a reminder that it's Joint Fire Board meeting on this Thursday at 5 o'clock at the Fire Hall.
Very good, thank you. Amanda?
No updates.
Christina?
No updates.
And Ryan?
Mayor City Council, just a couple of updates on development. Hidden Creek Phase 2, they have started utility work with that and will be progressing in the streets in a few weeks. With tonight's approval on Shadow Creek Estates, that'll, obviously, they, I believe they started a lot of their grading, but we anticipate having a pre-construction meeting this week, and they'll probably start utility work as early as next week, so that down by Goodview and County Road 50 there, you know, they're... and County Road 50 there, you know, there'll be a lot of construction activity going on that area, so that's what that'll be about for that 46 lot townhome subdivision.
Kevin?
No updates.
All right, let's go online with council, council member Huster?
No updates tonight.
Council member Valento?
Just that we had a cable commission meeting last week, and we looked at policies, the budget, and then Paul, always at the end, gives his great updates for the project that he works on, and I love how he always shares videos, and it's great, so, that's it.
Very good. Council member Roberts?
Nothing tonight.
Very good. No updates from myself either. That is the end of our, well, we are going to, that is the end of our, open meeting of our agenda, we are going to move into a closed session, and I would move that council move into a closed session pursuant to Minnesota Statute 13D05, subdivision 3B for a confidential attorney-client discussion regarding threatened litigation by Northern Plains Aviation Incorporated. After the closed session, that will be the, be the end of our agenda, we will come into open meeting just to adjourn. Is there a second for the motion to go into closed session?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, and we're in closed session.